Let's get this council work session started. It's 4:05. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Yes. Ms. Cole, Mr. Getty.
Here.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welber.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. President, the agenda is proposed. Staggert.
May with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're ready. I want to first thank all of you for being here this afternoon. Mayor Clark is in Washington DC along with some other city staff for our annual coalition trip. It's where they try to find some more resources for the local community. Before we begin, I just want to give a little preface on the way that we'd like to move things along today for this part of the work session. Chief Dan Tralka is going to open up with a PowerPoint over the ordinance so that we can all see what he's proposing. Next, we'll have questions or concerns from city council members over what's being presented. And then after that, we look very forward to hearing whatever the comments that you may have about the ordinance as well. So, once again, thank you for being here. And I would like to turn everything over to Chief Tralka.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. I've actually been working on this ordinance for almost three years because I learned when I took the job as chief of police that this was a potential problem in the city of Waterloo. And I have massaged the purpose of the ordinance. I handed out a draft ordinance to all the council members. Many members of the audience have it. But the purpose of this ordinance is to establish a systematic procedure for effectively abating properties that negatively impact the quality of life in neighborhoods. These types of properties tend to place an undue and inappropriate burden on the other taxpayers in the city of Waterloo by the frequent and chronic use of law enforcement services at these said properties. And I tried to keep this ordinance as simple as possible. And I have a short PowerPoint that I want to share with the council and the members of the community that are attending so that we can generate discussion and see how we should proceed with this matter. As the PowerPoint says, this code is simply a partnership. My intent with this code is we have, the majority of our properties in this city are fabulous properties. The property owners do a very good job of being good community stewards and good partners for us. However, we have a small amount of properties where they create a problem for us, they cause, they create undue financial hardship for other taxpayers. And I simply want to force a dialogue with these property owners. And if these property owners are unwilling to have a dialogue with the city of Waterloo, then we begin to take progressive action against them. That eventually hits them where it hurts, and that's in the pocketbook. And the premise of hitting them in the pocketbook is because we have to recover some of the cost that it's causing us, or costing us when we're continually responding to these properties. As I said, I wanted to have an ordinance that was simple, yet enforceable and effective. I reviewed ordinances from many, many other cities. And I took, I basically took their ordinances as a template and tried to fashion it in a simpler fashion and a fashion that's going to work for the city of Waterloo. Because what's good for Waterloo is not good for Davenport. What's good for Davenport may not be good for Cedar Rapids and vice versa and all around. I want to go over several definitions. The first one is an enforcement action. An enforcement action would be known as an arrest, the issuance of a citation, or the issuance of a written or verbal warning associated with a nuisance activity. The owner is just what it says. It's any person that owns that property, any entity that owns that property, any person or entity that is essentially paying taxes on a particular parcel. The police service fee. The fee I came up with is $50 per hour. That goes in line with the fee we charge for false alarms in the city. But even if one officer is unseen for five minutes, we bill it as a whole hour. So if one officer responds and he's unseen for five minutes, the property owner is billed $50. If two officers respond and they're unseen for 15 minutes, they get charged for two officers for a whole hour. So that's $100 per hour. A property is simply any single parcel in the city of Waterloo assigned a Black Hawk County parcel identification number. For property consisting of more than one unit, and I had initially, in my initial PowerPoint and in the initial draft of the ordinance, I had one dwelling unit. Well, my command staff, when they were reviewing this, they asked, "Well, what about a business with, like a strip mall, with multi-businesses in it?" So we evolved, we adapted, and we changed it just to one unit. For the term property in regard to this ordinance, property shall refer to a particular unit. So if there's a strip mall, and there is a gym in that strip mall, and we're dealing with that gym in particular, just that particular property is held accountable, not the entire strip mall. Here are the nuisance activities that I have listed in this ordinance. And I had to review state code to determine what they determine what nuisance activities are. I had to come up with an ordinance that meshed with our call reporting system. And I had to keep it as simple as I could so that we're not putting a lot of work and making this ordinance too cumbersome for the officers to enforce it. What I would, it seems like we always have officers that are on alternative productive duty, or what some organizations would call light duty. It would be my goal ultimately to have a light duty officer engage in enforcing this ordinance and tabulating these violations and how many violations a particular property is, where officers are being called to it. Here's where we get into what would deem a chronic nuisance property. First of all, no person shall knowingly use or allow to be used any property as a chronic nuisance property. The threshold for enforcement is three or more calls for police service in any period less than 12 months for nuisance activity. The nuisance activities were listed on the slide prior to this. Now with the ordinances from the other cities that I looked at, they gave the property owners an entire 12 months before they could be held accountable for the activity on their property. In discussion with my command staff, we felt that if we allowed a nuisance property to go for a 12-month period, the problem could become entrenched, it could grow deep roots, and it may be more difficult for us to abate. So even if we get three nuisance activity calls at one property in a one-month period, we could begin to take action. It's been my experience that we actually will, by the time we start tabulating these and utilizing the ordinance, it's very easy for some of these properties to rack up five or six nuisance activities. But three is a nice threshold that many, many other communities are using. And it'll help us abate some of these problems. I didn't want to use any domestic violence violations or any reported by the owner of the property, first of all, for the domestic violence calls, which other communities utilize on occasion, not all the time, but they look at the domestic call itself, and they may use the domestic violence call that may actually, in my opinion, be in violation of the victims, the domestic violent laws that the federal government has enacted in the past couple of years. We don't want victims of domestic violence being reluctant to call if they need our services. So those violations would not count. Any call called in by the property owner would not count because we want to work with the property owners to try to take care of these problems, or by any person designated by the owner of the property, such as a property manager or the manager at a store. If they call seeking our assistance, we don't want to utilize those types of calls in enforcement of this ordinance. We want to be as fair as we can, but we still want to be effective in our enforcement of the ordinance. Now if we determine a property has three chronic nuisance calls, I will send them a letter telling them that their property has been declared a chronic nuisance. If the property has a tenant, the tenant will also be notified. Now the owner has 10 days to provide me, after they get that notice, they have 10 days to provide me with a written abatement plan. We'll send this letter by US mail and/or we will actually post it on the property. If we have an opportunity and we know exactly, and the owner's living in the city of Waterloo, we may even have an officer deliver the notice to them. If after 10 days, the owner fails to provide me with a written abatement plan, they'll be cited $100 for the first offense of having a chronic nuisance property, $200 for each repeat, and they will also start garnering charges for police services. The police service fee, which is $50 per hour, for each subsequent nuisance activity that call that we get at that property. The nice thing about Iowa code is if the owner fails to pay that police service fee, we can assess it against their property in the same manner as a property tax. It would be a special assessment. Now that was simply eight slides. I tried to keep this very simple because a simple ordinance is more easy to enforce, especially for frontline officers. Other cities may have ordinances that look very good, but when I talk to the frontline officers in these cities where these other chronic nuisance ordinances are being utilized, they tell me that they're cumbersome and difficult for them to enforce because it's a very, very lengthy process. The analogy I like to use is we have a law in Iowa about transporting children in child seats or children that are restrained. And there are so many different dynamics to it, many of us as parents have a hard time remembering exactly when we're supposed to put that child in a child seat, or at what weight, what height, what age. I'm simply trying to keep this very, very simple so we can effectively enforce it.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions right now?
Chief? This probably doesn't need to be part of this ordinance, but any correspondence with the property, I would appreciate a courtesy copy of whatever that correspondence is so that when the property owner contacts us, and they will, so we know what's going on. So I don't know if it needs to be part of the ordinance, but I would ask that you do that.
We can make it part of the procedure. And, you know, keep in mind that I don't, I do not believe this ordinance is going to generate a lot of revenue. Because what I'm hoping is before we get to the point where we're citing people and charging them the police service fee, they're going to work with us. Because that's been our experience in the past. When we've had some really bad properties, myself or a captain has contacted them. And generally, 99% of the time, the property owners want to work with us to try to improve it. The problem is sometimes we can get overwhelmed with the number of situations such like this we get involved in.
Mr. Hart, Chief, do we, how do these fees compare with comparably sized cities?
You know, as far as the police service fee, that's the one, I did not notice a specific police service fee in the other ordinances. I would imagine they tabulate wages, benefits, and use of equipment. I like a flat number, $50, that has some continuity with our false alarms. But to answer your question, we're probably lower than other communities in their fee. But any part of this ordinance can change, evolve, or adapt if we needed to.
Thank you.
Dan, a couple of quick questions. Number one, on the draft you gave us, there's an item listed here on your nuisance activities called loitering. I did not see that on your PowerPoint. Is there a reason why that was not on there?
Loitering, Mr. Schmidt?
Correct.
It's simply an oversight on my part on the PowerPoint.
I didn't see it on there, so yeah.
Okay. It's still my intention to have that included there because that is, another thing I did, when I looked at, yes, it's simply an oversight on my part. When I looked at our problems that are occurring in Waterloo, generally what you see here on this slide right here is what causes our problems. Assaults, disorderly conduct, drugs, fights, gambling, liquor violations, shootings. On occasion, we have our issues with prostitution. But these are what we're dealing with and are causing some of the areas of degradation in our neighborhoods.
And the other question I guess I have, and I'm not sure if this is, I guess it's for you based on the folks you've talked to so far. Over the last several years, as I've gone to neighborhood association meetings, one of the things I've heard on a fairly regular basis is our code enforcement officers go out and give warnings, and then they go out and start issuing tickets, and those tickets are never enforced. Those things are forgiven. And the misbehaving folks, whether they're landlords or whether they're tenants, regardless of, you know, what situation is, basically it just boils down to we don't enforce the ordinances we have. And I know we have this conversation on an occasional basis that we have some real good ordinances in this city, but for whatever reason, we just choose not to enforce them, whether it's the pressure we get from folks or whatever the reason. Are you confident that you have the authority, the backing, the support to enforce these ordinances going forward?
I do. I believe that with this ordinance in particular, I'm just trying to give us a good tool to utilize for the betterment of our community. It's a lot like traffic enforcement. There are all kinds of traffic laws, but most officers only enforce, out of the thousands of traffic laws there are, most officers only enforce five to 10 of those traffic laws because they're the best tools to utilize for usage in our community. I want to bring forward an ordinance, out of the hundreds of ordinances we have, I want to have a really good tool for the police department to force that dialogue and leverage some of these property owners that aren't good community stewards, good community partners. I want to leverage them into working with us to improve the city.
I think we've got enough ordinances that none of us know, that until we get cited for one of them, it is an educational experience. But these repeat offenders, those are the folks that I think really need to have pressure put upon them, and hopefully that's what this is going to do. It appears like it will.
Well, and this won't, it won't add to our current ordinances. This is going to replace, my intent is for this to replace our current crime property ordinance, which is a very similar ordinance to this, but it was a little bit more cumbersome, and it didn't mesh well at all with our call reporting system. And there was no police service fee associated with it. So I'm actually, I want to utilize this ordinance, this proposed ordinance, to replace that ordinance.
Thank you.
Chief, I have a question. If, say for instance, one of the calls for service goes off to a location, whether residence or business, such as there's 25 young people in a particular yard or whatever, and you get there and there is not a problem, or you have a situation where you have a chronic amount of calls coming into a location, but once you get there, there's nothing that's taking place. Is there something for that, or is it if I call, it's an automatic checkmark against that business or that residence?
Nope. That's not held against them at all. The officer has to respond and verify that there's a problem. And once they verify there's a problem, there has to be a verbal or written warning, a ticket, or an arrest.
Okay.
And even though this is a simple ordinance, or what I feel is a simple ordinance for officers to apply, it's, there's still going to be some training involved for the officers. Because when officers respond to a call, what I'm going to require of them, and I'm going to give them training in this regard, is they're going to need to know that, because many times officers will go to a disorderly conduct, they'll arrive unseen, and there is disorderly activity going on, but it doesn't arise to the threshold of making an arrest or issuing a citation. Most actually result in a warning, verbal or written. And the officers are failing to put that in the notes of the call reporting log. So I'm going to give them training and remind them that it's essential that they list in the notes of the call reporting log that they gave a verbal or written warning.
One other question. Is there going to be a distinction based upon a business that receives hundreds of people that are there per day versus a residential house that probably has two to three visitors a day? Is that, if they're going to make, is there going to be a variation, or is that covered within the list of items you show them?
We're treating all properties the same. It's a level playing field. However, here's a really good example, convenience stores. We have a lot of shoplifting complaints, theft complaints at convenience stores, or disorderly conduct. Theft's not on here, but disorderly conduct is. Typically, those disorderly conduct calls that are coming in from convenience stores, let's say there's a fight in the parking lot or whatever, a large gathering of rowdy people in the parking lot, since it's the employee counting, or since it's the employee calling, that does not count against them. So we could have a convenience store with 80 calls a year that fall under this threshold, but they're calling to report the problem, to have us come and deal with it. Now if an officer's driving by and he sees that problem in that parking lot, and nobody from the business is calling, that will count against them. If the neighbors are calling and we arrive unseen and validate that there's a problem, that's going to count against them. We're hoping that this will also encourage our residents to call for some of our more problematic properties.
Counsel, any other questions? Ask questions later, but I want to give our residents that an opportunity to ask some questions or give some feedback if they would like.
And for this, I will give them this microphone. I'll move up to the microphone.
State your name and address, please.
Carol Gustafson, 209 Forest Avenue in Waterloo. I'd like to thank Chief Tralka and the council for giving us an opportunity to respond to this ordinance proposal. One of the things that I saw right away that was a big question mark for me was is that it seems like this ordinance proposal is too narrow in its scope, in that it's only really applying to police services and not looking holistically at all of the services that the city provides. Because when we think about what's going on with nuisance properties, it isn't just police responses. It's code enforcement, it is people that are going out and inspecting properties. So I just, I felt like you were trying to get it to fit into your wedge of your call reporting system, as opposed to really looking holistically at all the different departments that are impacted by the presence of nuisance properties in our city. So that was the first thing. I don't know if you want to respond to that?
Yes. The reason for that is our call reporting system doesn't mesh well with any other discipline outside of police, code enforcement, some fire violations. We've got a, I don't want to call it a very cost-effective system, is the system we utilize. If down the road, we do generate some revenue from this ordinance, we could look at acquiring a better system. But I just don't feel that's being a good steward of the tax dollar. And it's been my experience that if we're having code enforcement problems at a property, we're also having police problems at that property. Now they may get some, those code enforcement problems, be it littering or whatever, they may get some free passes on those particular violations. But I venture to say we're going to be successful in using, leveraging that property because of disorderly conducts, because of fights, because these things do tend to go hand in hand. I think this is a good foundation for us to start with. And as we move on in the future and see how effective it is, we may be able to build something different upon that foundation that looks different than what we currently have.
Chief, let me ask you a question, probably in a different way. Say for instance, Tim, what's your address? Someone so street has, you know, owns a property. And that property has, you know, trash in the backyard, not keeping up on some of those things. How, and code enforcement needs to go out, but there's not necessarily a problem legally in that aspect. How does this ordinance impact what we currently do with code enforcement in regards to working on that problem? Or does it at all?
It doesn't. It doesn't at all.
So?
I think if we see a trash problem, we're going to see other problems. We're going to see police problems associated with that property.
We also might want to note that the code enforcement process has been updated recently, and there's now an administrative fee that the property owner is charged at, so basically in any one, any given year, if you have a code enforcement issue, the first time you're given a warning. The second time you come out, even if a ticket isn't written, because we have to give you so many days to fix it, there's an administrative fee for the first time of $100. Or, so the first, it'd actually be the second time we come out, but the third time it goes up to $300, and it's $300 every time thereafter. So there has been some changes in code enforcement where they don't get free passes for us to continually come out and just give warnings. If we have to come out and tell you to pick up your property more than once, the second time you're going to start paying for it, and so on, so.
Which probably goes to the point, when we're taking a look at dealing with this problem holistically, we have what we are doing from a legal standpoint with police enforcement. But we've also made some changes with the way that we handle some of these properties as well. So I'm thinking maybe some way, if there was a way that we could, when we get ready to package this to the community, we can find a way to generate that conversation in there too. Because that's what you're asking as well, right? What are we doing on the other end where we may not necessarily need police enforcement, but we need to enforce some of the policies? So I think she's saying that that's changed too, but we just need to let the community know.
Sure.
Know that as well.
And just because those administrative fees have changed, that isn't reflected in your ordinance. And what I'm saying is, is that if we're going to put, take the time to put something like this together, then let's put it all together so that it's in one place. So if you're dealing with a nuisance property, you can look at this and say, yep, here's one part of it is law enforcement, another part is code enforcement, another part is, you know, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
The other thing that I would really like to see is more definitions for what you were talking about nuisance activities. For instance, gambling. What kind of gambling are we talking about? Are we talking about people that are sitting and, you know, playing computer gambling? Or are you talking about people that are playing craps in the back of their hallway? Again, you know, you need to be specific. When we're talking about liquor violations, are we talking about people that are selling liquor out of their home, public intoxication, providing liquor to minors? So I just would like to see more succinct definitions as to what you're talking about so that there is no question as to what exactly people are being held accountable for.
So maybe adding some definition a little bit to some of the nuisance activities so that can give you a better aspect on what you need to report. Okay.
Right. And then the other thing that I heard, several people that contacted me said that they really felt that the police service fee was too low, that again, if we're going to put some teeth into this, that we want to make sure that it hurts a little bit. And that means that, you know, if you're going to be assessed this, that you won't want to have it happen too many times because it's definitely going to smart a little bit in the pocketbook.
I believe that's the first time I've ever heard of raise fees.
She's not planning on getting one.
And I think that that's all that I had. So I'll sit down and let someone else talk.
Thanks, Carol. And we had had a conversation earlier in the week, last week, to put some, find out what folks were thinking so she can present that on behalf of who she represents. Name and address, sir.
Steve Murphy, 124 Terrace Drive. Chief, thanks a lot. I mean, you put this together, and then everyone comes down and asks you to fix that a little bit. And I want to just say thank you so much for what you've done. It's a great launching pad, and I think we're just here to try and make sure that we're getting the best bite of the apple. Councilwoman Cole, the Davenport ordinance that you asked about, the cost is $250, flat fees, $250 for the first occurrence, $500 for the second, $750 for the third. That's the Davenport ordinance. But it's hard to compare because we don't, we might send five officers out and, you know, have them there for two hours and do much better than $250 or $500. So what I'm concerned about is taking all of the, it seems like the shield, I think I'm having trouble with the shield system, and that's to me what's constraining what could be a pretty good law and moving it into that really, really effective law. I look at some of what the other cities have done, and there are so many things that other cities are charging for that we're given a free pass on. You know, kidnapping, arson, burglary, robbery, and it may be somewhere in here, but it's just, I can't tell. Terrorism, false imprisonment. If I live next door to a house that that activity's going on, I'm going to be a little chagrin that the ordinance that protects my property or my piece didn't look at some of those more serious items. And I know you don't want to ignore that. It's the shield system that's constraining us. Additionally, for us to take every violation and treat it fairly, so the first two are basically.
basically free. So if I'm in a, in a neighborhood and there's two shootings next door to me, and they're treated the same as two loud parties, I struggle with that. Because I want something to happen. There's many of these items listed on the shield. I want activity, and I think every resident would want activity after the very first occurrence. I mean, some of these things are fairly serious. So I like what some of the other cities have done in putting these in buckets, because if we bucket, you know, one call, two call, three call, we can kind of work on some of the more nuisance areas while still protecting folks from some of the serious stuff. We can't say we're charging every time we go out, because some of these nuisance, that wouldn't be very fair for, for some property owners. But treating them all the same, really, I struggle with that.
Okay, so, so like, just a shooting or some of the more serious?
Yeah.
Serious crimes of nature, maybe scaling them out a little bit versus, you said like the loud party and?
Yeah, I'm trying to pick some of the more minor ones that just happen in the course of people living in a property. You know, you get a loud party, maybe you get a, you know, like I said, I can't guess what some of the minor ones are with the definitions. Additionally, you know, if we could just take one step farther, I think it's unworkable, but I at least want to throw it out on the table. Some of the stuff that the West Central Neighborhood Association has really dealt with is apartments, you know, common residences that have caused trouble throughout the neighborhood. If there are people that are burglarizing the neighborhood and they live in a single apartment, they're untouchable by, by this. Because the burglaries didn't happen at this, at their neighborhood, the burglaries happen throughout the neighborhood. They've ruined the peace of that neighborhood, and that's not something we're making up, that's something that's occurring. Chief, you have the statistics, you know that's correct. Is there any way that we can use this ordinance to kind of work on those types of peace of mind, peace of neighborhood, you know, items? Because that's the issue. I'm looking at, it's great to see what we're charging for, I appreciate that. I just see too many holes of what we're not charging for.
Mr. Hart. Ms. Murphy, if I may address that, I think we're getting mixed up here. This is, these are nuisance problems.
I understand.
But you're discussing some very serious crimes. This is just nuisance that's bugging us as neighbors.
Right.
Yeah, you're talking about shootings and, I can't remember even all of what you said there, but serious.
But it's on, it's on Chief Kralka's list. Not shootings necessarily, but there's some very serious things on there.
I agree, but I think what you've been mentioning are some very serious crimes that we already are dealing with. These are just bothersome things that bother us as neighbors.
Well, these, if we have, kidnapping's a good example. If we have a kidnapping, of course, we investigate it fully and we take it very seriously to resolve it. Shootings, if, you know, we don't have frequent shootings at one location in the city that often, but a shooting will go hand in hand with a disorderly conduct or other violations on this list. Again, I tried to keep this simple. Other cities do assess points for particular violations in their ordinance. It's my opinion, my philosophy, that that adds to the cumbersomeness of the ordinance that makes it more difficult for the practitioners, the police officers, to enforce. The same with, some of the ordinances have, they enforce it within fifteen hundred feet of the property. That's difficult on two counts. Officers then have to measure it. It adds to the investigation, it adds to the cumbersomeness, and I quite frankly question the constitutionality of imposing that upon any property owner. I think we've got a good foundation with what I've presented. Now the numbers, you can slide around to fifty dollars, that's all up to you. I picked a number where there's some continuity with actions were already taken, but, you know, I just want to have an ordinance I think we can enforce.
Chief, I'm wondering, is there something else? Because this is an excellent start. I was just wondering about, because if the communication, we, this puts us in a position where we can have communication directly with tangible things that have happened at a particular property, so that we can address the landlord or the owner of the property. So this does start some type of conversation about things that are happening at that property. Do you think, from what Mr. Murphy had asked a question about in regards to, you know, this property over here, there's a lot of activity taking place, there's a lot of things happening, do you think this helps get us to the point where we can engage the property owner, so that they can make some decisions to get rid of whoever's living in that particular resident that is starting the problems or keeping problems up? Does this give us some of the tangible tools that we can use to get us to that point? I think that was his question.
It does. It's a forced dialogue. And if the property owner doesn't want to have a discussion in regard to this dialogue, then we start putting additional heat on them.
Sir, would you come to the mic and name and address, please?
I thought that was a perfect segue. My name is Mark Pregler. I'm with the Black Hawk Landlords Association, and we applaud you also for the direction you're going. This is great. We agree with the majority of where you're going, but I had to raise my hand when you opened up the segue of communication. I'm late, so if you already covered this, I apologize. But my particular, my personal, not necessarily the landlord's view, is it's perfect that we get communicated with when the police are there, but sometimes I don't know that they were there. The tenant sure as heck isn't going to tell me. I usually learn from the neighbors. Tangible to what code enforcement is trying to do with communication, I started posting my contact information on all of my rentals, so that when you're there, you know who to call. But unless something has changed since I read this about a week and a half ago, there's no communication until the third visit and the fine start. And I don't know if it's a privacy issue because of the tenant's right to privacy, but if I, I can't fix it if I don't know it's broken. And if there was any way to communicate with the property owner and/or the property manager, again, I'm posting my contact information on all my rentals because of that. Others haven't gone that far yet, and code enforcement is asking us to email them our property list with the tenant's contact information. That's an awful lot of information for them to ask. Just our members alone represent four thousand of the eight thousand rental units. That's all we're really asking for. We don't necessarily have a direct argument with the fine structure or the fees, because there's just as many bad landlords as there are good ones, bad tenants as there are good ones. But communication, that's what we're really looking for. We can't fix it if we don't know it's broken.
And we, once we serve notice, we give the property owner ten days to respond, to provide a written abatement plan. And if you look at the ordinance further, we don't even, but we don't start to take any action until an additional ten days have elapsed. So in essence, after the property owner gets notice mailed to them, taken to them, or posted, we literally give you twenty days.
So there's no fee, there's no fee, there'll be, and notice will go to the property owner?
Yes.
And from there, alert the property owner, there's been a problem, these situation, then there needs to be communication within ten days. If there is communication, there's an abatement plan put together, something's worked out with the landlord, then there's no fifty dollar charge right then, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
Gloria Little, 822 Baltimore. I'm also part of the West Central Neighborhood. How are you going to handle these properties? I hate to refer it to the Hy-Vee Byron Avenue Apartments, but they're all condominiums now. They all have individual property numbers, so if you have an apartment with fifty, but they're all individual condominiums, how are you going to handle the three trips in one year? I mean, if you have fifty apartments, you'd, they could accrue one hundred and fifty calls before you could assess anything.
And that's a good question. And looking at our past responses to these types of calls, what we see is in that fifty unit apartment, there's two or three that are causing the problem. The vast majority of them aren't creating many of these nuisances, just like in a, in any particular neighborhood. One or two houses are causing the problems, and the, this proposed ordinance will address that nuisance property.
So, so it'll be just fifty individual, like fifty houses in those apartments, and you'll be dealing with that in each one? So it might work, might not. I would guess on that apartment complex, there's probably more than two or three.
Name and address, ma'am.
Maureen Garish. I'm the manager of that property. I live in Cedar Falls, but I work in Waterloo.
Property, ma'am.
The Courtyard Park Apartments that they're discussing, the fifty-five unit. I've been to court three times for nuisance tenants, and they've been thrown out three times, because I don't have a police officer there to question. I bring in a seven-day notice and it's thrown out. I brought in the crime addendum to our lease, it was thrown out as useless, because the magistrates are saying that we have to bring in a witness, we have to have preponderance of evidence. They're making it very difficult for us to get rid of impossible tenants. So I wondered if anything was going to be done on the legal end to allow us to get rid of them. Right now, our hands are tied. They throw out the cases. The only way we can get rid of them is if they don't pay rent.
Typically, when a citizen comes into the police department and requests or asks for a report, we charge them ten dollars for that report. When they get that letter from me, they're going to have a summary of every single incident we consider a nuisance activity for free. There's going to be, that'll be the evidence right there, evidence that the court will accept with showing the activity going on at that particular property. So it will assist the landlords.
Give them another tool to be able to use for violations when they go to court with whoever served you. Your name and address, please. And Maureen, if you have, if you have any other questions, chief, I'm pretty sure you'll be available at some time, I hope.
Yes.
Good afternoon. It's Chief Kralka and the city council. John Dutcher, Cedar Falls, Iowa, 1238 Clark Drive. I have for forty years owned property in Waterloo, and my, my home is in Cedar Falls, 1238 Clark Drive, Cedar Falls, but for forty years I've owned property in Waterloo and currently manage property in Waterloo as far as rental accounts. I understand where you're coming from, and before, and I would really urge, before you consider accepting this ordinance, to try a degree of communication between the police department and the landlords, so that we can, first of all, see if we can resolve some of the problems. I kind of disagree with Mark. I believe that probably ninety-five percent of the rental property in Waterloo is great rental property. Five percent is a problem for you and for us as far as landlords. Similarly, as far as residential property, ninety-five percent of the property in Waterloo is great, five percent of it's a problem. So before we come up with an ordinance that, and in many cases, may be somewhat unenforceable or drop down the road, and by the way, I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of the Iowa Landlords Association. I'm very familiar with Davenport's organization, or Davenport's nuisance problem, Dubuque's, Cedar Rapids, Cedar Falls, and to some extent, they're generally to the point of unenforced. So it's selective enforcement, and that bothers me if we get to the point of selective enforcement. Some of the problems I have with this and the nuisance items, what we're doing is saying that we, as a landlord, can be charged a fine and a fee for problems that aren't adjudicated. So in other words, it may be a loitering situation that may or may not get resolved by the court, but similarly, because it's charged, we may end up with a fifty or a hundred or two hundred dollar fee or fine associated with that. That, to me, is a problem with due process. And we, we talk about an analogy, and the cheapest for any with, with traffic offenses. I am too. We get out on Franklin Street and one of us pulls, and a police officer pulls us over for speeding. We've got a situation where the officer asks for the driver's license and the registration and writes up the driver of that vehicle or the ticket. Under this nuisance ordinance, what you're really saying is, we want to see your driver's license, your registration, and now we want to charge the person that owns that car the fine or the fee. So.
Thank you for your comments. You have, you have some more, sir?
No, I think we'll just, we'll just.
No, thank you very much for your comments. This is, this is, you know, part of the first process, we're listening to our residents, we're communicating with people, so we appreciate your comments. The first thing I would say, though, in regards to the driver of the car, if there is a violation taking place on that particular property, if there's an assault, if there's a disorder, gambling, or whatever it is, we're going to deal with the criminal offense that takes place. We just want to make sure that this is a way that we can also deal with the offense that takes place if there, if there's a crime being, crime happening, but also a way that we can get the landlords engaged to help provide some type of enforcement. So we're not, so like, the driver of the car is going to get a ticket. This person that is breaking the law is going to get a ticket as well. They're going to get, if they're, if they have a weapons or a weapons violation, we're going to arrest them. So I'm not, I'm not understanding what parts you're talking about.
And I, I understand that, and for serious criminal, definitely arrest them, haul them to jail. That takes care of things. But on the other hand, and realistically, what we're looking at is, in some cases, you're giving us ten days, and under the Iowa landlord tenant laws, generally, it may take forty-five to sixty days for us to remove a tenant. It's a lot easier for non-payment of rent, but it takes thirty days if, and it probably will take longer if, if we present to the court that they were loitering out in the hallway. That may take thirty to sixty days and may even probably be thrown out under the Iowa tenant laws.
All right. So noted, thank you. Name and address, sir.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I think Mark and, and we're thinking that we're picking on the landlords. I think it says chronic nuisance properties, and that's even property owners that don't rent. That's any property in Waterloo. Is that right, chief?
That is correct.
There you go.
Sir, please come out. Name and address.
Chase Keller, 1917 Downing Avenue. One issue with that comment is that it's not the property that's, it's the nuisance, it's obviously the people committing the crimes. But as far as the, the abatement plan, it's very generic, there's no set rules on what that is. Obviously, it's going to be a per basis deal, but if it's a verbal or written warning, would that be sufficient for us just to mail a letter to the tenant saying, don't do it again? Would that work? Obviously, if it's an arrest, that's something that we can go forward with, with the courts, but the courts aren't going to listen to just verbal warning. If it's not enough for the police to actually do something about it, it's not enforceable for us to evict somebody, to remove them from the property for that same crime.
All we want from the property owner, if it's a landlord, is a written plan. It's wide open. Just do something and tell us what you're going to do. If, if it's your plan to ultimately evict them, tell us in the written abatement plan. It's my plan to evict them, I'm going to start the process on such and such date. We realize that takes time. Sure, send a, a letter to them, tell them, tell them, you know, listen, this is what's going on, you need to clean up your act, but if that written abatement plan doesn't work, it's obviously not effective, and we'll start charging you a police service fee. We need them to engage in an effective plan. It's very progressive, a lot of due diligence built in. You know, this is, I just feel we have a good balance here with this ordinance.
Chief, this is something that the landlord and PD can work together, together towards, right?
Absolutely.
I'm out there on an island, but we can work together to start some conversation to get you to that point where you have some tools to use.
The absolute worst thing a property owner can do after we give them notification is for them to ignore us.
I absolutely agree, and I, it would be beautiful if there was a better plan of the, the police going out, they notify me, I can immediately, within a few days, do the same thing, so that the same thing, so that it's coming from both directions, so that the, the property, I'm, I'm a landlord, I guess I should have said that upfront, so that I can do something as well, because most of the time, there's lots of calls to my properties that I never know about until the other tenants or neighbors tell me about it. So that would be amazing, if there was a better system where we can go forward and take care of it on both ends. Another issue is that if I have a vacancy, for me to fill the vacancy, obviously, I do background checks as much as I can, but there's nothing in there, unless there was an arrest or something very serious, there's nothing in there to tell me that that was a nuisance person coming into my property that is not a nuisance property, it's the nuisance person, there's nothing that I can do. So there's no slap on the wrist for that tenant going forward. If I, if I kick them out of my property for, for being a nuisance, they're just going to go to somebody else and continue to be a nuisance person on their property. And I think there, there needs to be a better system of recorded slap on the wrist. I've had police called to myself as a college student and everything else, I've never had an arrest or anything.
Three times a year.
I'm very thankful that they're only verbal warnings, but knowing that I have verbal warnings, I'm not going to tell my new landlord or somebody that I'm going to apply to that I've been a nuisance, and I think there should be a better way to, to handle this going forward between the landlords and the police. Obviously, I can't say for just normal property owners, but yes, I do thank you for going forward with something. I, I think we need to do it in a different direction or a little bit better of a system, but I'm glad that we're actually moving forward with something like this.
Mr. Hart? This may be a question for the city attorney, because I don't know what kinds of checks are landlords legally permitted to perform.
Well, pre-application at that stage, they're, they're not going to have access to the police department's criminal record database, so they're going to have to use credit reports and other means to find out what kind of tenants. References from past landlords are a good way to go about it, but it's a difficult market that most of these houses and that we're talking about right now are in. Rent levels are such that it's very difficult to spend that pre-rental investigation, you just don't do it for that kind of rent, it's too hard to do. And the economics of this are very difficult. The landlords who do more investigation have less trouble, the landlords who do less investigation have more trouble. You can't always weed out bad tenants, you don't always know before they get there, but remember, the, this new ordinance doesn't penalize you the first time, doesn't penalize you the second time, even the third time, all it does is get you a letter. And at that point, if you're responding appropriately, there's still no problem. Now, getting them out, the big loophole here we haven't figured out a way to get through is the magistrate court system that won't allow you to evict unless it's pretty darn clear that this tenant's a bad guy. And just hypothetically, they get there and say, "Well, it was Bob down the street who did that, not me." Yeah, the cops came out every night, but it was Bob was doing something, not because me, I, I didn't do nothing, I was a good guy. And the magistrate exercises judicial discretion and says, "Okay, I'm not going to evict you from your, from your home on a hearsay record that some, and you come and tell me somebody else caused the problem, but remember." In this situation, we're balancing interests, and the Cedar Rapids city tickets you if your brother drives your car through the speed trap downtown Cedar Rapids, and that's a balancing. They can't put you in jail because your brother drove the car, they can't fine you some ridiculous amount, but they can give you a civil penalty. It balances the interest of them to get the speeds down as much as they can without having a policeman on every corner, and the interest of the owner, who really shouldn't be punished too badly for what's done with his car. Likewise, the owners of these properties, they're not being put in jail, they're not being punished extremely, they're being asked to pay our costs for policing their property, and that, that is not an extreme burden on them, it's a minor burden, and it's a first step in our effort to improve the neighborhood.
The owners, the owners could assess, the owners can't assess whatever ticket they receive.
If their lawyer's good with his lease, he may be able to do it, but remember, the legislature's put extreme limits on what landlord can put in a lease that can be enforced under our tenant protection statute.
Chief, did you have any?
Nothing.
We have, we have about five minutes left.
Just one quick question. Dan, have you looked into Dubuque? I thought I had heard that they had a, going back to Mr. Keller's comments, that they had a renter registration program, so that you, as a potential renter, would go down to the police department, fill out an application, so you're sitting there with a police officer, filling in these blanks, and then if you don't have a rental registration form filled out, I, as a landlord, could say, "I'm not going to rent to you because you haven't done it," and that tends to inhibit the misbehaviors. Jim, have you, have you heard of that, or Dan, have you? I think it's Dubuque that I've heard that.
You can, you could make such an ordinance, but it's going to be expensive, and most tenants aren't going to register. You're going to have people, "Uh-uh, what are you talking about, register? I just moved to town, I didn't register anywhere." And, and when they register, they might lie anyway.
Chief, just a suggestion, because communication is the key here. I would suggest that, that if a, any correspondence with the property owner, that it would trigger a letter to code enforcement at the same time.
Yes, good suggestion.
They would get a copy.
Does the lady on the right want to speak?
All right.
Jane Young, 215 Lovejoy Avenue, and listening to the addresses of people before me, I think I'm a neighbor, maybe not by definition, I'm just across Kimball Avenue from what I think is this neighborhood, but I'm also a landlord, and my one strong disagreement is that if you're marking me down for one call, I want to know it. If, if, if there's something that my tenants are doing that are disrupting, they're disrupting the big store neighbor who is my tenant, I want to know it. I would be very upset if, if I got the third call notice from you without hearing first and second, and I think that would strengthen. It follows up with what Chase Keller was saying. Thank you.
We do, we post every single call we respond to on the internet. We respond to 222 calls a day, so it's, it'd be very difficult for us on one call to let the landlord know. Sometimes we have calls, very urgent calls, waiting for an officer to respond to for thirty, forty-five minutes. That's just the nature of the business. So to help our citizens out, we post every single call online, and they can, the address is available, the type of call, and if they need more details, they can take the initiative to come to the police department and find out what's going on.
Here's, here's one of the problems I see over in this west central neighborhood is that somebody rents the apartment, passes the background check, pays the rent, but has a bad apple move in with them. What, what's in this ordinance, how do, how do we address that? Is the, I know in the Section Eight, if they have, if, if the Section Eight voucher is given to somebody, and they have somebody move in that's not listed on that, then they're in violation, they get, they get totally kicked, they can be.
They could be terminated.
They can be terminated from the program and the apartment. What then they clearly.
They could be terminated from the program. We can't make them move out of the apartment because it's up to the landlord then, after we terminate them, that's the landlord's.
Ethel, could you, are you, could you step up to the mic?
Sure.
Okay, we can, once, once they are in violation, we'll go through a process, send letters to the landlord and the tenant, but if the tenant decides to remain in the property or if the landlord decides he's not going to take care of whatever the issues are, then we can terminate the tenant from the program, but we can't make the tenant move out of the property. Then that's up to the landlord to decide what they want to do with it.
And then what, what other, what else, what other tools we have, say, if, if there's somebody that is living in the, in an apartment that is not on the lease, then we communicate with the landlord and say, "Here's, here's the, your problem is..."
Yes, yes, as a matter of fact, that's another area that we got to give the officers training in. If they go to one of these properties, they need to, typically, they do identify who's involved. Sometimes they just don't get a chance to, or they're neglecting to, so we need them to, and I believe that's a matter that's typically addressed in a lease. I mean, you sign a lease with who's going to be living there, and, and the landlord can take care of it.
That's another problem, I, this Maureen Garish.
Can you wait just a second? We'll, we'll take one more comment, then we're going to close this, and then further communication, if you have something, please continue to forward that to the council or to the chief directly for any other, any other things you may think.
I've also been involved in that situation where a bad apple moves into an apartment, and the tenant realizes they're a bad apple, and they want to get rid of them, and they call the police department to get rid of them, and the police department says, "As long as they have clothes in this apartment, we can't do anything." We can't do anything as the landlord, so, once again, we don't have anything to back us up to get rid of bad apples.
Can I suggest that if you had a lease that had the name of the only tenant, you could evict them?
All right, well, I want to thank everyone for your input this evening. I think this is a great start to engaging what our community thinks based upon the work that the PD is trying to do, and we got some very good suggestions tonight. I took a lot of notes to communicate with Chief and with Mayor Clark in his absence, so I want to thank you all for being here this night and being patient as we work through this process. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you. Thank you. Everyone, it is 5:30, and I would like to welcome you all to our 5:30 council meeting this evening. Of course, I do not look like Mayor Clark. He is in Washington DC. I'm not saying that's bad or good. He's in Washington DC with some of our other city staff on our coalition trip, so they're out there doing some important things on behalf of the city of Waterloo. So, I welcome you this evening. Madam Clerk, can you read the roll?
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Getty?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here. I'd like to ask all of you to please stand right now and join us in a moment of silence. And, of course, we want to ask for your thoughts for the citizens in Boston, as well as the ones that have suffered loss in the Texas explosion. So, join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. And on your schedule, it probably states that we will have the Pledge of Allegiance done this evening by Eric Thorson, but Eric has delightfully postponed his reading of this evening. We have a very special guest in the audience today by the name of Jayla McCoo, who I would like to call up here. She's a nine-year-old young lady who recently became the first runner-up for the State of Iowa National Miss USA Pageant. And she will be representing the city of Waterloo. I think it's in November. She'll be representing the city of Waterloo this November. And if she would lead us in the pledge, that would be great.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you very much, and please let us know how we can support her in the future as well.
My God, she's beautiful.
Mr. Mayor Protim?
Mr. Welper?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have to add an item to our consent agenda. That's 1A4, a request from NEI Iowa Food Bank for adherence to the noise ordinance on April 27, 2013, from 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. in conjunction with the Kick to Can 5K event to be held at Exchange Park and River Loop Amphitheater, including the use of a PA system together with recommendation of approval of the Director of Safety Services, and also the approval of the minutes of April 15, 2013, regular session as proposed.
Second. We've had a motion that's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. We have a couple proclamations this evening, and I'll tell you, if you wanna take her out for some ice cream, you don't necessarily have to stay for the rest of the meeting for this part. We have a pretty long meeting this evening. But we have two proclamations this evening, and the first proclamation will be in regards to... And I'd like to call up Liz Roto. Are you here with us, Liz? And this is in regards to Adolescent Pregnancy Prevention Month. So, nice to meet you, Liz.
Nice to see you, and I'm a worker together with Jean.
Okay, okay. And I'll start off by reading the proclamation. Whereas, we call upon other leaders across the great state of Iowa to take a stand in their communities and join in a national effort to prevent adolescent pregnancy. And whereas, the city of Waterloo supports the national stance and calls upon individuals, organizations, and institutions in our community to join in this effort by calling attention to the significant issue of adolescent pregnancy, and to understand the importance of a strong partnership between the community and the family in helping young people foster responsible and positive attitudes toward their sexuality. And whereas, the future of our city depends on the public's need to understand and to be educated about adolescent pregnancy. The community as a whole needs to develop positive and ongoing communication with our adolescents to provide solid information and an opportunity for open discussion. And whereas, high standards in adolescent pregnancy prevention services represent a strong commitment to the future of our youth. Now, therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor Protim, of the city of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim May 2013 as Adolescent Pregnancy Prevention Month in the city of Waterloo, and call upon our citizens to support this important event. So, Liz, do you have some words, and can you tell us a little bit about what's taking place?
Sure. Well, the county of Blackhawk is at its lowest rate in teen pregnancies. It's been in the last decade. And this May, I have been working on a project with the high schools in Waterloo at their Success Street sites, which provide a variety of services for the students and community members. To recognize that it's Adolescent Pregnancy Prevention Month, we put together some teen survival kits to pass out to them.
Okay, all right. Well, we wanna thank you very much. Did you...
This is a graph showing the increase in programming in Blackhawk County and the decrease in the pregnancy rates, and our annual report with just a little bit more information about our programs.
All right, thank you very much for the important work that you're doing with our young people, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing. So, if there's anything else that we can do, any programs or activities, please make sure you let us know as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Now, I would like to call up Luan Alameo, I believe. You here?
Yep.
And, of course, none other than Jean Seeland as well for our Global Youth Service Day. Oh, Ethel, you're coming up too? All right, the City of Waterloo Proclamation. Whereas, Global Youth Service Day, a time for children, teenagers, and young adults to serve, and for everyone to celebrate the contributions young people make to their communities every day of the year through service and service learning. And whereas, Global Youth Service Day Program of Youth Service America is one of the largest service events in the world, and only day of service dedicated solely to engaging youth ages 5 to 25. And whereas, in 2013, Global Youth Service Day is being observed for the 25th year in all 50 states, and for the 14th year globally in more than 100 countries across six continents. And whereas, the city of Waterloo depends on youth as vital community assets and resources, and on their unique knowledge, idealism, skills, perspectives, ideas, and creativity as they lead awareness, service advocacy, and philanthropic activities. Now, therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor Protim, of the city of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2013, as Global Youth Service Day, and encourage all citizens of Waterloo to serve their community. So, first, Luan, do you have some things you wanna tell us about some things that are happening, and a little bit about what you do?
Sure. I'm working on a project with Iowa State Extension with Gardening and Nutrition Education. And so, we are implementing over in the Walnut Court area, we're going to have youth and children helping with individual gardens, and then giving them the practical experience... I'm a family consumer science educator, giving them the practical experience of gardening plus nutrition education, getting their hands dirty, getting all those microbes, you know, that sort of thing.
Okay, all right. Well, we wanna applaud your efforts. I think they say service begins at home, and what better way to begin service by teaching our young people of the value and importance of the neighborhoods they come from, and building that foundation in our young people. So, we wanna thank you very much. Is there a way that we can come out and work that day as well?
There certainly is. We're gathering on the front lawn of Walnut Court Apartments at 4 o'clock Friday afternoon. Come dressed ready to dig in the dirt. It's supposed to be sunny that day, and we'll put you to work from 4 to 6 Friday afternoons. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we are having a drawing this evening for the winner of the Cedar Falls 3rd grade class as part of the Grouk Museum's District Museum School Bus Tour. Do we have that? Please come up. Can you tell us a little bit about... What was your name?
Annette.
Annette, how you... Nice to meet you. Can you tell us a little bit about what's taking place?
Museum School is our week-long program that we have for 3rd graders in the Waterloo-Cedar Falls area, and they come to the museum, and they learn their local history through exhibit, exploration, tours, hands-on activities. So, this is kind of an accumulation at the end. One teacher from Cedar Falls and one teacher from Waterloo, the kids get to come together for a day, and the Cedar Falls kids will give the Waterloo students a tour of downtown Cedar Falls, and then the Waterloo students will do the same thing for the Cedar Falls students with lunch in between.
Okay, okay. So, you're teaching them about local history, local Waterloo...
Yep, and how the Cedar Valley developed, yes.
All right, that is great information. So, for the people that didn't win, can you let them know, can we blame that on the mayor and the person that did win?
Sure, sure.
I'll take credit for it.
There you go.
Yep, that's one. It is Kelsey Schmidt's class from Southdale Elementary in Cedar Falls.
No relation.
All right, thank you very much. And please keep... Continue to keep up the great work in teaching our young people about Waterloo-Cedar Falls and the Cedar Valley.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any relation, Councilman Schmidt?
No, sir. No, sir, not at all. No connection.
All right.
Mr. Mayor Protim?
Mr. Welper?
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's 1A through item 10, and also the bill's payment Ms. Cole has.
The bills this week are $2,722,220.56, 2,722,220.56.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. Any discussion about any of the items on the consent agenda? All right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I would vote yes, but I would need to abstain on a payment of $117.50 to Schmidt Telecom Partners.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes. All right, the consent agenda has been approved. All right, public hearings, City Telephone Replacement Project.
Mr. Mayor Protim?
Yes, sir.
Number 2 is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of a public hearing for the City Telephone Replacement Project. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that carries. We are now open for the hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak towards this particular item?
Well, we don't have a... They're down there.
They're down there?
Down there.
There was, the group must've took them all. That was really...
Right, we're working on a City Telephone Replacement Project. There's some improvements that need to be made to bring us closer to the 21st century. So, that's what we're... That's what we're taking a look at right now. So, any questions from anybody in the audience? Any questions from council right now?
Make a motion to close the hearing? Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications from a contract, et cetera. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I would be abstaining on this motion, as my company's one of the bidders.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution ordering construction. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any discussion, council? Madam Chair, roll call vote. Madam Clerk, I mean.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protim, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to open and read bids and refer to director of technology for review. Second.
This has been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
I'm just gonna apologize now.
Sample.
We have a estimate of $295,000 for this bid with no bid security required.
The first bid is from Marco. No idea where that's from. Urban Deal.
Urban Deal, Iowa.
Urban Deal. Thank you. Section 6, page 19. And the total price is $174,209.59, 174,209.59. Yeah, we'll just let them find them. They're in a whole different section somewhere. The next one is from Network Solutions of Waterloo, Iowa.
Taking no one from Network Solutions is here.
Mark can remember the page number.
Looks like their total bid is $195,405,195,405.00. The next bid is from Schmidt Telecom Partners of Waterloo, Iowa.
I didn't do the bid. No conflict.
Looks like the total bid is $142,907.97, 142,907.97. Final bid, I believe, is from Tri-City Electric, but we'll see if that's the same name when it gets in. I believe their bid is 192,104.15, 192,104.15. Although, I'm not sure what's included in that total.
If you wanna come get those, we'll have... We need a cart. And then sort through those, so... Number 3?
Mr. Mayor Protim?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 3, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the request by Sunnyside South Edition LLC to rezone 16.083 acres of land from R1, 1 and 2 Family Residence District, R4, RP Plan Residence District, and C2CZ, Conditional Zoning District, to R1, 1 and 2 Family Residence District, property generally located along the north side of West San Marnon Drive between Ainsborough Avenue and West 4th Street.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak towards this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time. And just to note, we did receive a email, an objection of this item. Don't know how much the email actually pertained to what we're doing tonight, but we did receive a email in regards to opposition of this particular item.
Mr. Mayor, or Mayor Protim, I'd make a motion, and before... I'm sorry, before I make that motion, I guess I'd like to ask Eric Thorson, did you see that letter? Are you aware of the letter that Mayor Protim's talking about? If you are, I'd like to have you address that, if you could, for the record.
Eric Thorson, City Engineer. I did see the email, and we're talking about some drainage problems that are way downstream from this particular project site. There is a study that was done years ago that does delineate some improvements that can be made. They're very costly. On the other hand, a lot of the standards have changed since those types of things were done, and this developer will be required to provide stormwater detention and stormwater management practices to ease the flow of runoff from this residential subdivision, so...
So, that'll be all part of that development agreement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And some of the plans have started coming in, and we're starting those reviews.
Perfect, thanks. So, I'd make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a rezone on certain property.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any question? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
All right, motion is carried.
Mr. Mayor Protim, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
All right, motion carried.
Make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Last time for questions. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
All right, that's motion that item carries. Number 4?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Getty?
Item 4 is the request of Habitat for Humanity of Blackhawk County for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally located at 332 Irving Street for $1 with a development agreement. Make that motion to receive and file that proof of publication and notice of public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Signified by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are open for a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the... Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? On the second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion's been made with a, um, proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Getty?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adopt a resolution authorizing said sale and conveyance and authorize the city attorney to prepare and deliver the deed accordingly.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Counsel, any discussion about this item? Madam clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adopt a resolution approving development agreement and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Alright, that carries. Number five.
Mr. Mayor?
Pro Tem?
Mrs. Cole?
I move we receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for the Waterloo Cedar Falls Home Consortium FY 2014 One Year Action Plan for CDBG and Home Program Funds.
Second.
Alright, motion has been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the hearing is open. Is there anyone in the audience that would, uh, like to speak, um, uh, in support or, uh, in opposition of, um, what's laid before us with the CDBG and Home Programs information? Please step up to the podium, um, please say your name and your address.
Tricia King, Ida Needle, 522 Mulberry. I, I am definitely for, for the program. Are there any questions concerning our request?
I believe so at this time, but we want to tell you good work.
Thank you.
Done a lot with not, you've done a lot with not a lot and have done tremendous work, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from anyone out there? We have our board chair, we have some members here. Any comments from anyone?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, ma'am.
If I could just say thank you to all of you for doing a really hard task and you have less money every year and we know what that's like. Thank you.
There's no more discussion? I'll take, uh. Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adopt a resolution authorizing said plan and authorization submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any other discuss, discussion, counsel? Madam clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Alright, that concludes our hearing. Uh, we move on to our resolutions. Uh, if you want to try, um, three at a time, six, seven and eight, can someone take those?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number six, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving variance to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance in section 2 dot 3, 1. Final plat submittal for United Medical Park Edition. Item seven is adopting a resolution approving preliminary and final plat of United Medical Park Edition located south of 1731 and 1753 West Ridgeway Avenue along with the staff report, aerial photo, deed of dedication, certificate of survey and report of the city engineer. And item, item number eight is adopting a resolution approving award of bid and contract for the 2013 right-of-way mowing contract to B&amp;B Lawn Care, Inc. and approval of contract, bonds and certificate of insurance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any discussion about six through eight? Madam clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Alright, if someone can take nine, 10 and 11.
Mr. Mayor?
Pro Tem?
Yes, ma'am.
Nine, I move we adopt a resolution granting financial assurances to the Iowa Association of Regional Councils and the Iowa DOT for the local match and the maximum not to exceed amount of $1,320 related to the submission of an airport zoning grant funding request. Ten is a resolution approving State of Iowa Grade Crossing Surface Repair Fund Force Agreement and authorize mayor to sign said agreement. Eleven is a resolution awarding the contract to Boulder Contracting LLC of Grundy Center for the FY 2013 Sidewalk Repair Program Zone 3 and Trail Repairs Contract Number 848 in the amount of $141,972.38.
Second.
Alright, motion has been made with the proper second. Um, I think we have questions by Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, item number 11, I was just wondering, uh, if we have thoroughly vetted that contractor. I'm not, I'm not familiar with them and I know in the past we've had some issues with some of our sidewalk repair companies, so I was just wondering if we have familiarity with them.
Eric?
Um, Eric Thorson, engineer, we did do that. Uh, we had them fill out a statement of bidder's qualifications as we do with any contractor that was working for us for the first time and, uh, that checked out very well. We did check some references. They did both of Cedar Falls sidewalk projects last year and did very well according to the officials there, so, uh, we think that they'll be fine for our contract.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions, counsel, on those last three items? Madam clerk, a roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Alright, those items carried.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item 12 is a resolution approving contract, bonds and certificate of insurance for Boulder Contracting LLC in conjunction with the FY 2013 Sidewalk Repair Program Zone 3 and Trail Repairs Contract Number 848. Item 13 is a resolution approving agreement with the Waterloo Water Works for water main replacement for the FY 2013 Street Reconstruction Program Contract Number 832. And item 14 is a resolution approving the Enterprise Zone certific, certification for the expansion of the Enterprise Zone to include property bounded by Williston Avenue, Pleasant Street, West 7th Street and West 8th Street, locally known as Williston Field, and make a motion that these three items be approved.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Counsel, any questions about these three items? Madam clerk, a roll call vote.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Alright, those items carried. Fifteen through eighteen, eighteen actually.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Item number 15, a resolution approving Convention and Visitors Bureau Board Recommendation for Funding in the Event Capital Hotel Motel Tax Grant Funds for fiscal year 2014 totaling $141,000. And 16, a resolution approving Second Amendment to Development Agreement with Sunnyside South Edition LLC initially approved on January 7th, 2013 to revise project completion date and insurance requirements and to provide for temporary continued use of street after conveyance to developer. And in 17, a resolution approving request to dedicate necessary sanitary sewer easements and temporary construction easements for the construction of approximately three-quarters of a mile of sanitary sewer to serve land surrounding the new Orange Elementary School.
Can you take 18 too?
And 18, a resolution approving request for temporary parking to be allowed on the west side of the 500 block of West 8th Street between the alley and South Street.
Second.
Three seconds in a row.
Got it covered.
Uh, motion's been made with the proper seconds.
Thankfully.
There's about four items on there. Is there any discussion by any of the counsel? Mr. Schmidt?
I have a couple, uh, questions regarding the C V Convention and Visitors Bureau funding. I noticed we had a couple of items, uh, on there regarding, uh, UNI and just wanted to hear a little bit about how, uh, that benefits City of Waterloo.
Alright, we have Aaron Buzza in the audience today and Aaron, could you respond to those?
I would like to qualify that, that I am a UNI graduate. Four of my six kids, UNI graduates, my wife's a UNI graduate, almost all my siblings. I'm a big UNI supporter, but I just wanted to hear a little overview of that.
Absolutely, and, and we appreciate the opportunity to answer the questions. Both of the, the UNI events, one for the UNI Overseas Recruiting Fair and one that's, that's payable to the Unidome for actually two different wrestling events, uh, are impacting Waterloo as much if not more than they are Cedar Falls and the UNI campus directly. The overseas recruiting fair, uh, which happens in late January or early February every year, brings in 900 guests who stay anywhere from three to eight nights in Waterloo. Impacts the convention center, impacts hotels, uh, restaurants and, and retail. And then the two wrestling events, one occurs in, uh, late October. One occurs at the end of, uh, March or the first part of, uh, April dependent on when Easter is. And that brings in about 5,500 to 5,800 wrestlers plus family members and fills every hotel room in Waterloo and Cedar Falls, Evansdale, Grundy Center, Independence, Waverly, um, and, and certainly has a huge impact on, um, the hotels and, uh, retail and restaurants once they make weigh-ins.
Uh, VGM, is that for their annual conference?
The, the VGM is, is for the Annual Heartland Conference, yes, at the, in, uh, mid-June. And this year, they, uh, made an application to assist with transportation for guests who are coming up from the Cedar Rapids Airport. Uh, that brings in somewhere between 800 and 1,000 people, uh, for the better part of a week and just for ease of transportation for those guests coming in. Uh, we're, we're assisting them with shuttle transportation this year.
My Rotary Club has volunteered to, to work at that event, so I know it's a great event. But in the past, have we used this funding for private, for-profit businesses or is that something new?
In, it, last year was the first opportunity for, uh, for-profit entities to apply. It's been, I think, three now that we've allowed to, to make applications. And, and mostly, um, it was out there as a, sort of a catch for entities like a military reunion that aren't necessarily organized as a nonprofit, um, but it certainly does allow for a for-profit entity uh, to make an application if they're following, uh, the mission of the program and if they can meet the goals, uh, that we, um, expect them to meet with the program as well.
User services, can you tell me what that's for?
That's for some, um, additional upgrades at the Riverfront Sports Complex just to make it a little bit more user-friendly to, to help kind of add the finishing touches uh, to that amazing project that's already bringing in people. Uh, there was an event last September that brought in two teams from Canada and they've promised to bring at least two more this year for that same event. And so it's just some finishing touches, some bat racks, uh, some helmet racks just to make it more competitive as we go out and, and bid for softball and baseball tournaments.
Okay, and then finally, uh, Cedar Valley Pride Fest, what that would be used for?
It's going to be used for marketing, um, and, and one of the main purposes for the, the hotel motel tax grants in, in our minds is for marketing and for entertainment, which serves the marketing purpose because they can talk about the, the better, uh, uh, entertainment that they have. And Pride Fest has submitted what I would consider one of the best marketing plans we've ever seen with the grant applications. Uh, very specific niche markets, um, great publications that, that reach their target audience. And then they've got an amazing street team, uh, that's going to be going to other competitive or competing events or, um, similar events to try to promote the one here in Waterloo.
Thank you.
Aaron, do we have, do we have, um, any numbers on the impact, um, that the Pride Fest made to downtown last year? Any of the numbers generated or?
It's hard to say, um, because of the focus so much being on just the event itself. Typically, we see impact because of restaurant visits, overnight stays. We're actually part of an organization here in the state that's going to be getting a study uh, that was commissioned through the University of Iowa, uh, to do a better job of, of telling us what the impact of an event is when the event takes place in the community but doesn't necessarily have the same sort of impact for shopping and, uh, restaurants. So, I can, I can better answer that question, uh, probably later this, this summer.
It was a ton of people and then I had a, I was told to give you a message when I saw you from Friday. Uh, the Iowa 51st Square Dance Group, they had complimented the work that, uh, the Convention and Visitors Bureau has done to help their stay and also with the Five Sullivan Brothers and everything that you've guys done for them. So, I was told to give you that message when I see you.
Sure appreciate hearing that. Thank you very much. That was a great group to work with.
Alright, counsel, where we have 15 through 18, do we have any other questions on any of those items? Madam clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'm going to abstain on item number 15 because I think there's three different organizations there that I'm on the boards of, so I don't want to have any appearance of any, uh, influence. And I'll vote in favor of 16, 17 and 18.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
I will abstain on item 15 because of the VGM connection and I will vote yes on the rest of them.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Goes without saying, huh?
Third second.
Alright, um, well, number 19, ordinance change.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Welper?
Number 19 is a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amending the 2008 Traffic Code by adding subsection 1 Allen Street of Section 545 Yale Streets and deleting subsection 1 Bayard Street of Section 545 Yale Streets and inserting in lieu thereof subsection 1A Bayard Street of Section 545 Yale Streets. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All, uh, um, any questions about this? Madam clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Alright, motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor Motem?
Questions, Bob?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third time, adopt the ordinance. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions, counsel?
No, sir.
Madam clerk?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes. Alright, that carries. Bert, um, let's take these separately.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mrs. Cole?
I move we instruct city clerk to prepare plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera, for the 2013 local and long-distance phone service.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I move we receive and file plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She carries.
I move we adopt a resolution preliminarily approving plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam clerk, roll call.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I will abstain on this item also as my company will probably be bidding on it.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
I move we adopt a resolution setting the date of hearing and bid opening as May 6th and instruct city clerk to publish notice of plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Cole? Can you continue?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were finished.
We're done with 20 now?
We're done with 20.
21.
Would you like me to take it?
It would be.
Gotcha.
It would be our pleasure.
I move we instruct city engineer to prepare plans, specs, form of contract for the FY 2013 Street Reconstruction Program, which is contract number 832.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
I move we receive and file plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.